I will call a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:00 PM. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Bietz, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Gedge.
Here.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Milice Gola. Alderman Tenza. Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
There.
We have twelve members present.
The single item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution 18024, creating a special revenue fund for the 201 Main Street building. And in keeping with our tradition, I will turn the hearing over to the Chairman of the Budget Committee.
Okay. I don't see anyone here to give a brief explanation on Resolution R18024.
I can do that if you like.
Alderman McCarthy?
This just creates a special revenue fund which is a parking place for contributions to the endowment for the Performing Arts Center until all the other mechanisms are in place.
Okay. Any questions there before we get started? Seeing none, I will now take testimony in favor of our 18024. Seeing none, I will now take testimony in opposition to our 18024. Seeing none, I will now ask again for testimony in favor of our 18024. Seeing none, I will now ask for testimony in opposition to our 18024. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Sorry.
Motion is to adjourn.
Did we vote or...oh.
This is a public hearing.
You didn't have a right to ask a question.
My bad.
Well, this is a public hearing. It's not...
We don't vote.
We'll be addressing the actual resolution at another time. This was just for input.
Correct?
Yes.
So it's not for us to debate here now. This is a public hearing, even though there are no public. So the motion on the floor is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 7:04.
Okay. I'd like to talk about the budget. We want to make sure that we have the right services for our DOL. We want to make sure that we have the budget. The budget is the budget from here where our teachers and our administrators are wanting to catch up. We do want a sense of predictability. We do want a sense that when your children have a child without a teacher, it's an expectation that you have the other children who will have that same teacher as well. Okay. So, I talked, I feel like I've talked too much, and I don't want to push too many... I might have been talking too much. I do that several times. So I like to sound dialogue, but I can keep talking. So I always like to say, I'm moving around the room, I like to say, I always like to check the room to make sure that I check the temperature and that people are looking at their block. Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call the Budget Review Committee to order. It's April 23rd, 2018. We're in the Aldomatic Chambers, and would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman at large, Larry Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman at large, Brian McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman at large, Michael O'Brien is present. Alderman at large, Shoshana Kelly is absent. Alderman Jan Smith.
Here.
Is present. A member not in attendance is Alderman at large, Davis Tenza. Also in attendance is Alderwoman Alderman June Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Laws, Alderman Cle, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Gedge, and that's it. And the Chair is present, Alderman Richard Dowd.
I'm also here.
Oh, Mr. Alderman Jettie.
Okay. So, I know the, I believe that Alderman Kelly and Tenza are both on vacation. This is school vacation week, and I think they're traveling. So, public comment? Another one. Communications.
I'm finished business resolutions. Communications, there are none.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Unfinished business resolutions?
Yes, there is one. I would like to make a motion to take from the table the budget R1824.
Okay, the motion is to take from the table R18024, which is the budget.
No, it's actually the Main Street, sorry.
What?
It's...
Oh, it's the, I'm sorry, it's the Main...
Yeah.
You're right, you're right.
Excuse me, my mistake too.
Yep, it's the Main Street. I mean, the funding for 20 Main. So, the motion is to take from the table R18024, which is creating a special revenue fund for the 201 Main Street building.
Very good.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R18024.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to recommend to the full board final passage of our 18024, creating a special revenue fund for the 201 Main Street building. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R18024, creating a special revenue fund for the 201 Main Street building. We had postponed it till this evening, till after the public hearing which we just had. And before we get started, since we're addressing this, would the representative from the Planning Department like to come up and sit up here in case there are questions?
That would be you. Questions, because you will be here in a second anyway. So, have there any discussion on this motion? Alderman Lopez?
Can the public actually directly contribute to this? And if so, is it like the donor's going to be public record?
As far as I'm aware, and Alderman McCarthy can tune in, anybody with funding that wants to contribute to this is welcome to do so. All set?
I have no ulterior motive for that. I just wanted to make sure the public knew that they can now start donating.
So if you want to write a check.
Yep. City of Nashua.
I don't know that we've put that mechanism in place.
Oh, hold on.
We've put the account in place. We typically pass a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept donations in addition to that. That will come, but I don't, but I don't want the public to think they can't give money. I'm sure we'll figure it out.
Have the checks ready.
We have someplace to put it, so. Any other question? Yes.
Anyone who wants to right now can do so through City Arts Nashua, who is already collecting money and has been for several weeks. So, if you wish to, if you wish to donate tonight, get in touch with City Arts Nashua.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie?
I have a question as, unfortunately, I can't find the proposed resolution right now, but as I read it before the meeting, it looked to me like there was a mechanism being put in place. Oh, okay, thank you. So it, the resolution talks about revenues and expenditures shall be accounted for in a special revenue fund to be known as the 201 Main Street Building Special Revenue Fund, separate from the general fund. Any surplus in such fund shall not be deemed part of the general fund accumulated surplus and shall be expended only after a vote by the legislative body to appropriate a specific amount from said fund for a specific purpose related to the purpose of the fund or source of the revenue. So I just wanted to, it to be clarified if possible. So, it sounds like whatever revenue might be produced, I don't know what revenue we're talking about, but if we rented out this building, for example, and any surplus revenue would only be used for the purposes of, of what? Of maintaining the building and any excess revenue couldn't come back to the general fund? Am I...
I could answer this, but I'm going to let Alderman McCarthy answer.
That's, that's not what it says. It simply creates the vehicle for holding the money, and the language that you're referring to is the standard language for special revenue funds to say they're not commingled with the general fund. How the money gets into it is yet to be determined. So we could, when we deliberate policies for the building, we could say that any rental proceeds will go into that fund. It is more likely that we will ultimately create a nonprofit that operates the building. At the moment, I think this is foreseen as simply a vehicle to capture donations to the endowment fund and hold them until such time as the nonprofit is created. And all it says basically is this board has to vote to expend money on it, and that can only do so for things related to the building.
May I?
Yes. Alderman Jettie?
If the purpose of this thing is to collect the, you know, is to collect the money that we have to generate, the $4 million that we have to generate before we can go further with this project, shouldn't we have language in here that specifically says that? As opposed to the way it's worded right now, it sounds like, I mean, obviously, we have the obligation, we own the building now, we have the obligation to maintain it, and whatever money is needed to do that is going to come out of the general fund until and unless the $4 million is raised and then, and then the, you know, the rest of the funding, the bond is issued and we go down that road. In the meantime, we're still, it's a city asset, we still have to maintain it, and if we don't get, if the public doesn't donate anything, the city is still going to have to pay for this. And yet, if, for example, the, you know, things don't go the way we hope, and, you know, in the meantime, we rent out the building for whatever purpose, it sounds like we're limited as to what, what the excess revenue, that we couldn't get, put that excess revenue in the general fund.
Absolutely. This is for collecting funds from the public towards this arts center, and people give the money to generate the arts center. So, there's only two ways the money can be spent through the Board of Alderman. One is to promote this four and a half million dollars to get it started, or, in the case that we don't raise that money, be able to give the money back to the people that donated it. We cannot use that money for any other purpose. And correct me if I'm wrong, but including maintaining the building between now and the time it's established. Alderman McCarthy?
This legislation doesn't address that. This, I mean, this is creating a bank account.
Right.
How the money gets into the bank account is, is a topic for another day.
Alderman Lopez?
If we did, for whatever reason, rent the space out, we could still put the money in that account anyway, couldn't we?
This is a decision we would have...
If it was decided as the board...
This board would have to authorize the rental, the administration to rent the building, and then when they do that can express where the revenue goes.
So there's nothing here prohibiting that, is my point?
No.
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Alderman Jettie?
I would just like to respectfully suggest that, you know, that what's being said is all well and good, but I don't see that language expressed in this resolution. And I'm wondering, wouldn't it be better, wouldn't it be clearer to say exactly what you're, what you're doing?
Alderman McCarthy?
No, I don't think it would, because I don't think we have the mechanism sorted out for how any of the rest of it is going to work. We just, we need this specifically because City Arts has money that needs to get into an account somewhere. We haven't figured out how citywide donations will work. We haven't figured out how we're paying in the interim for maintenance of the building. We haven't figured out what revenue sources are going to the, to the, and that's, I mean, that's not part of the discussion of creating the special revenue fund.
Yes, Director Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. I just want to echo President McCarthy's comments and add one additional detail, which is, from the very beginning, we advertised to the community we'd be as transparent as possible. We want to make sure that we can have a clean accounting for what we're doing. This is a clear effort to fulfill that obligation, you know, so it doesn't get muddied by being, you know, coupled with the general fund. We can see in very clear accounting that this has been segregated, and we can see the income and the expenditures associated with 201 Main Street with that.
Alderman Jettie?
I hate to beat a dead horse here, but what the resolution says is, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 471-1-B to restrict revenues from rent and fees at the 201 Main Street building to expenditures for the purpose of operations, maintenance, repairs, and improvements of the 201 Main Street building? It doesn't, doesn't talk about, you know, shall we put money from, that is being raised by Arts Nashua for the purpose of financing this building into a special account? If that's, if that's what we're doing, why don't we just say so?
Someone want to address that? Alderman McCarthy?
I mean, I've addressed it as far as I desire to, I think.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Lopez?
I'm not sure that we should deliberately plan to rent it out, because I thought we communicated the public this was intended for one purpose, so it seems like it would be a topic of a lot of discussion if we started using it for another.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Jettie?
If I could just answer that, I'm not making this up. This is what the, this is what the resolution says. It says revenues from rent and fees at 201 Main Street. Doesn't talk about revenues raised by nonprofit organizations supporting the proposed Performing Arts Center.
Again, it's just a special revenue fund that is, exists, and we have the ability to put donations towards the arts center into that fund, and then expend them in accordance with the language in that, which says that it can only be used for that purpose, or to return the money to the people that donated it. Any other funding mechanisms can be addressed later. Okay, any other? So the motion on the floor is to recommend final passage to the full board of R18024. All those voting in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Yeah, let's get this out, boy. It's not going to be long.
Okay. So, all right. Mr. Chairman, there's no unfinished, no unfinished business ordinances, and there is no new business.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to take from the table R18019, which is the budget.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to take from the table R18019, which is the budget, so that it can be discussed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now discussing R18019, which is the budget, and tonight, we're going to be discussing the general government, economic development, parking operations, and the Hunt Building. And here to discuss that with us is Director Cummings. Do you have a present, I see we have a presentation. Do you need the keyboard or the mouse?
Yes, it was set up earlier. I don't know what happened.
Uh-oh.
Oh, boy.
You might want to come over next time.
It doesn't come down on request. Here we go.
It does come down with speedo.
What was that Groucho Malt show where the duck came down? Dating myself.
Groucho?
Ah, Groucho. He's doing it from his.
Yes. Okay.
So I think everyone got a hard copy with the agenda? No. Only if you printed it. So not the one you have, the one that's sent out by Sue. That's all right. He's going to go through it. Just while he's setting that up, on all the budget meetings, I had asked all the divisions to send their presentations in advance, and sometimes they'll come out as soon as we get them to the Budget Committee, but they'll always be attached as part of the agenda for the evening that that division is being discussed. Director Cummings, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Tim Cummings. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city, and I just put together a couple slides to give everyone just a very brief, high-level overview of what my office is charged with, and then I will be happy to answer any questions relative to the services we provide or the budget at hand that's, that's before you. I will say, relative to the budget, this is a very straightforward, level services, maintenance budget from year to year. So, with that being said, the mission of the city's economic development function is to promote a diversified, sustainable, and vibrant economic base that maintains a high quality of life for Nashua residents and businesses. The Director of Economic Development shall report to the mayor. He or she shall have the overall responsibility for developing programs to enhance the economic vitality of the city, including maintenance, maintenance of strong communications between the business, community, and the city, fostering opportunities for job retention and existing business expansion, promoting expansion of the labor force, promoting employment diversity and growth through new business recruitment, encouraging the continued enhancement and vitality of downtown Nashua as the focal point of the community and a desirable place to live, work, and shop, and conduct social discourse and oversight and management of public parking lots, garages, and meters. And then it continues on. In addition, the director shall also undertake such special studies, projects, and other related duties as may be assigned by the mayor to promote economic development, undertake or assist in the development and implementation of immediate and long-range plans for the economic development and improvement of the city, and maintain up-to-date statistics on the economic conditions of the city. So, that comes directly from our charter and the ordinances and regulations that govern us. So, that's a very high-level and very academic outline of what my office does, but essentially, we are the, if you think about us in terms of constituencies, we have a senior, you know, function, we have a social welfare function, we have people who liaise with education. I am essentially the city's face and, you know, liaison to the business community and the business world. So I work very closely with our private sector partners, along with other major stakeholders in the region, in the state, to help promote Nashua as a place one could grow and thrive as, as a business. We do that through having an open line of communication as outlined. We do that through offering incentives, whether that's helping with, with taxes, or through grants or loans. We provide what's called development finance tools to help businesses in real estate get off the ground for our benefit, whether they're providing jobs or additional property tax revenue for the, for the city. Some major priorities of this office that we have been working on is, one, the school street development, which is in between High Street and School Street. We would like to see that developed into a higher and better use. It's a surplus parking lot right now in the downtown. Another major project of my office is making sure we shepherd through successfully the Performing Arts Center for the city's behalf. This is a downtown redevelopment initiative that supports the arts and cultural industries here in the, in the city and in the region. And then lastly, working to bring passenger sector rail to Nashua and on up through, through Southern New Hampshire. And we'll do this either, you know, working cooperatively with Concord and a public sector solution, or Nashua has taken the, the forward-thinking steps of trying to do a public-private partnership, or what's known as P3, to, to help address the passenger rail issue if we need to go in the direction of a private sector solution. Still to be determined how things progress on this, but we are actively working to address all three of these, these issues. So one thing I want to make sure I mention is parking. Parking falls under economic development. I want to point this out in particular because I know a lot of you hear about parking, whether that's, you know, outside of the city relative to enforcement, or whether that's just the maintenance and care of our parking garages and parking lots here in the city. So, we have parking underneath economic development because parking, I often say, should be in a downtown looked at as a utility for the common good. What do I mean by that? Think of it as like your electricity, or your sewer, or your water. To achieve the type of form that one has in a downtown, so not quote-unquote "strip development," we need to remove parking as being isolated to the plated map and parcel, but used for the collective good, for everyone's benefit, for the general welfare of the downtown. To achieve those goals, we need to make sure that we always, you know, take a special look at our downtown parking. I would be remiss not to also note that my office is also charged with maintaining 14 Court Street, the Hunt Building, as well, so as well as, until recently, the Arlington Street Fire Center and its adjoining office building that is now being used as the Arlington Community Center. My understanding is institutionally... My understanding is institutionally or culturally here in the city, a lot of the surplus municipal buildings and grounds were housed under economic development to steward, and so we continue with that. We're involved in many differing aspects of Nashua, whether that's, my office is directly liaising with Pennachuck, our wholly-owned subsidiary, that, you know, the city went out and procured back a few years ago. We help with planning, so there's a picture up there about the Riverfront Master Plan. We help with the long-term plans for the city, and we just produced one recently, if you recall, Sarah Marshant and I came before you, for the redevelopment of the riverfront. The other picture is the Mill Yard. My office is charged with being on the Board of the Mill Yard Associates, and we have a lot of property and land due to the Broad Street Parkway within the Mill Yard still, and we're an active member of the Mill Yard Association, and therefore we play a very active role in that area. And then lastly, downtown, we have a great nonprofit partner with Great American Downtown. I sit on the Board of Directors of that organization, and we partner with them often to execute on differing goals and services to be provided for the downtown's benefit. And then lastly, a public-private partnership that was the start of what I'm working on now, which is the School Street Surface Parking Lot, is the Renaissance Downtown Development Program, which was surplus land that the city back in approximately 2007 decided to put out to the private sector for development. Here we are today. I'm proud to say that we have 152 units under construction and leased, and they are, they being Renaissance Downtown, is looking to move forward with what is essentially their Phase Two, and that's an additional 150 units to come online, hopefully within the next two years or so. So those are some additional projects that, or ways we interact with the community that I wanted to make sure you are aware of. Some goals that my office has is to reduce Nashua's commercial vacancy rate by marketing and promoting the city. Obviously, by doing that, we will increase assessed values and try to bring new jobs into the city. Another big goal of my office is to increase housing, and I'd like to see something around 1,000 units added over the next few years. Why is this an economic development goal? Because the biggest issue we hear from businesses is the lack of personnel readily available for workforce, and if a company is looking to grow and expand, they need to know that they have the talent readily available, and to do that, we need to have housing stock that caters to our workforce. So increasing our housing to be able to supply the local region and the city with the jobs necessary is vitally important. And then I'm always endeavoring to look to implement policy changes, you know, make recommendations to you as the policymakers on ways we can ease doing business in the city and how we can further flush out the process. I am a government person. I've worked in government my entire professional career. I understand bureaucracy, and I understand process, and I like to figure out ways to try to expedite that process as quickly and as efficiently as possible for the private sector's benefit. So with that being said, that's a very high-level overview of the services and functions that my office provides. Happy to take any questions, or if you'd like, I can continue just very quickly on to, you know, the budget that's before you.
Thank you. I have a question about parking. And how the transition has been. Can you give us a little snapshot?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
So it has been, it has been a learning curve to some degree, to be honest with you. We have done better than I expected in some areas, and we have not lived up to my expectations in others. So on average, if I was giving myself a grade on this, and I actually had this conversation about a month ago, you know, B, B-, you know, it wasn't an A, wasn't a C, you know, I mean, I think there's room to improve, but with that being said, I think we've done a fairly successful job in transitioning over. I think we can communicate a little better with the public on some of the issues, and we're working on that, streamlining, you know, the number of phone lines there are and the places you call, you know, whether you want an overnight parking permit versus whether you want just a regular parking permit, or where you go if your car gets towed. So we're gonna try to be a little bit more customer-friendly by trying to, you know, make it a little bit more one-stop shopping. Then culturally, we just have some issues that we need to work through that only time is gonna help with that. You know, we have to make sure that culturally we're changing the idea of what, how you effectively manage parking. It's a supply and demand issue, something I'm very comfortable with, and setting expectations appropriately that, you know, we don't need to create more parking supply, we just maybe need to manage it more efficiently to be able to get the results that we're looking for. Overall, one of the reasons why we transitioned this parking consolidation was this parking operations, particularly on the enforcement side, was losing money year over year, and we are working very aggressively to try to, you know, rate the ship on that and try to bring it into the black and out of the red, and we're not there yet, but we're closing the gap, so I'm very happy about that. And otherwise, we've gotten a lot of feedback from people who appreciate us taking proactive steps to try to, you know, communicate more effectively, try to be more efficient, you know, try to actually bring people into compliance relative to the management of tickets, issuing tickets, whereas we've been, in the past, we've been a little bit lax on that. There was a philosophy of passive enforcement that we're trying to bring people into compliance and hopefully, you know, with that being said, follow the rules and the laws of the city.
Thank you.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Lopez and Alderman Klee.
On the topic of parking, I've actually received a number of constituent complaints that prior to an emergency, a snow emergency where residents were required to move their cars off, they've actually been ticketed for going too early, like within an hour of when they had to have their cars off the road, so I'm just passing that feedback on to you. I think it's more just a question of bringing your ticket to the City Hall and saying, this is what happened.
Oh, yes, Director Cummings?
Thank you. That's actually a very good point, and one that we need to discuss, not tonight, but at a later date. I would caution you, if there's a thought process into changing that ordinance, it's very clear right now that parking is not, parking is allowed when a snow emergency is in effect, but not leading up to the snow emergency for X amount of period of time. And we have lease agreements in place where we have a legal obligation to have parking spaces, and if they're not available, we're potentially putting ourselves in some jeopardy, or we need to give us some time to unwind those agreements so we can make that parking available to the public. That's one issue I foresee that we're gonna need to talk through. Secondly is the potential bad habit that I would, you know, suggest we would be creating for ourselves, that slippery slope of, you know, if we, I understand we need to be very responsive to our constituents, and we need to keep them in the back of our mind, but where do you stop when you draw the line? How far back do we go? You know, what's the difference between four hours or six hours, or why does one neighborhood get that treatment over another neighborhood? You know, right now, it's very clear when a snow emergency is called, you're allowed to have that parking available to you, but if you start to create a window where people have access to it in advance, it's gonna become very complicated and messy.
Follow-up, Alderman Lopez?
Well, as I said, I didn't really think that was necessarily an ordinance change. It could just be a supervisory issue. If the city's purpose is to clear the roads for snow removal, maybe just tell the guy not to go ticket everybody who's doing that, and don't necessarily encourage people to park an hour before a snow emergency when they're, I guess, just leasing space out or something.
Hold set.
I actually wanted to ask a question on a different issue. The Renaissance Park Riverfront Development that you were talking about, we were, several of us were at a meeting where some discussions were being made around the traffic in that area, and a lot of the constituents were pointing out that with the increasing number of cars, they're not sure how the traffic flow is gonna go. There was an idea that was being pushed around a lot last year about the loop redirecting and smoothing out the traffic flow from east to west. Is that still being pursued?
Director Cummings?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to clarify, because you're bringing up two different projects, though they could go hand in hand. So one project where, is the meeting that occurred about two weeks ago with our civil engineer, McFarland Johnson, for a community input meeting that some of you here I know attended, relative to a traffic improvement project for East Hollis slash Bridge Street. That's separate. That's one project. Then about a year or so ago, working with the Infrastructure Committee, so previous session, some of the former members of this Board of Aldermen, we had a conversation about reversing some of the one-way roads in the circulation here in the downtown to make the traffic flow a little bit easier, and follow the recommendations that were promulgated by VHB, who did a circulation study, I want to say in 2012, off the top of my head, where their biggest recommendation was to try to bring people more easily from the Broad Street Parkway to Main Street, because you sort of, for lack of a better word, end at Central Ave. You get, you spill out or you dump out onto Central, and it's, and then it's very difficult, in some people's opinion, especially if you're not familiar with the area, to get to Main Street. So is there a way we could make that more convenient? There's a lot of trade-offs to doing that particular project, adding parking in some places, losing parking in other places, netting out about the same, making infrastructure improvements along the way that will cost somewhere in the range of $500,000, and then culturally, just whether the community is willing to accept some of the changes that would need to occur. We had that conversation. We continue to study it. Some of our larger stakeholders have expressed some concerns with the idea, major businesses here in the downtown, because culturally, they like it the way it is. We know, and we agree with VHB's opinion, that if we were to make this change, it would be better overall, but, you know, change takes time, and we're willing to slowly work through that process. So I'm not exactly sure which specific project you're talking about, but if your project was regarding--
I was referencing the two projects that's happening, but the public output is basically the same, is they want to know what's going on with the series of meetings that you had presenting a possible plan that they didn't necessarily ever hear about an outcome for.
The circulation study?
Yes.
That's because we don't have a plan vetted out well enough yet that I could recommend moving forward. We've gotten, we told the Infrastructure Committee, we would go out and solicit input, and we would take people's concerns and sentiments, and then try to develop a plan that would be successful and achievable, and then weigh that with our other capital priorities, and if it, you know, rose to the top, we would move forward. We're still in the, we're still in the process of vetting it out to get consensus.
Okay. Alderman Klee?
Mr. Cummings, I've been working with Jill Stansfield from your office, and she's been extremely helpful. Thank you very much. But one of the things, kind of the roadblocks that we're coming up against, is our current laws, ordinances of, you know, in this particular case with Abbott Street and somebody violating the parking. We give ticket, they pay ticket. We give ticket, they pay ticket. So it doesn't accumulate in anything like that. So are you, is it something that we would do here as far as changing that kind of a--
Director Cummings?
Thank you. That's a gift. That's like with a bow on it. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm kind of excited because I get an opportunity to say to you all, I'll be coming before you to make a recommendation that we increase parking fines and penalties. The reason why you do it is to change behavior. I'm the biggest culprit of that, and I probably shouldn't admit this, but if I get a $10 ticket, that's, you know, $10 that I have to pay, but it's not gonna incentivize me to change my behavior, to act appropriately, and that's ultimately what we're trying to do. We don't want to ticket people. We don't want, you know, to assess people fines. We need to assess those penalties at a higher enough dollar amount that will discourage the behavior, so people will act in accordance with our laws. We are not doing that right now, and we need, and to do that, we need to increase our fines. So I will be making a recommendation to you on that. It's ultimately your decision as to how you'd like to act.
Thank you.
Alderman McCarthy?
If I recall correctly, the current ordinance calls for escalating fines at such time as we have the means to administer them. The problem is, we don't keep track of license number, plate numbers for parking fines, so we don't know who's the second and third offender. So I believe we already have that in place. We just need to fund whatever software or servers are required to keep track of who the frequent flyers are, and then their rate will go up.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Alderman Guthrie?
On page 183, where you have dues and membership, what is that? What dues, membership? Just curious.
Okay, so under dues and memberships, so I belong, on behalf of the city, to a few differing organizations, and this pays for some of those organizations. ICMA, International City-City Managers Association, ICSC, the International Council on Shopping Centers, Cornet, another one is CoStar. So there's a few differing membership organizations that this, that this office belongs to.
So they're businesses, I'm assuming, something like that?
Either professional associations, or the last one, you said memberships, correct?
Yeah, it says dues and membership.
So that's, those are all professional associations that, either to promote the city that we're involved with, or being an economic development professional, urban planning, we're a member, you know, we're members of that. For instance, Community Development, this week, they're members of American Planning Association. They're all at a conference right now for that, so it's along the lines of that.
Other questions? Yes, Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you. Word one has some older families, and several older women have told me that they don't like to come downtown because they can't find a place to park. And when I show them all of the parking areas, they say, well, they're usually full, and they direct me to the parking garage. But I was accosted once in the parking garage, and I don't like it. If there was someone there to maintain it or offer some security, I think they would feel a lot safer. I know it's expensive, but it might be worth looking into?
Director Cummings?
Thank you. I'd be happy to look into that. I don't disagree. I think, you know, we can do some very easy things, low-hanging fruit. It's gonna cost some money, but we would see people increase usage. One is increase lighting and make it brighter. I think that would provide another comfort level. I've thought about that, but nothing we do is cheap, and, you know, we all have to balance budgets, so it's, you know, it will, it will take some time. One of the things I'm hoping to do is to, right now, we're running at a little bit of a deficit, but if we can start to run at a little bit more of a surplus, I'll be able to make arguments that will, we should, in theory, direct some of that money to make those specific improvements and not have it be on the property tax base.
Thank you.
I think I had Alderman Laws first.
Well, just to Alderman Schmidt's point, there's a lot of technology these days, what you were saying. I mean, there's automated security, just to cut the cost by exponentially, so, I mean, there's options out there that won't cost the city as much money.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yeah, I just want to bring up again that the problem's actually worse, because back when we contracted the management of the garages, and there was an attendant who collected money, we understood how full the garage was, and we could resell the leased spaces that were not in use for the day, and when we got near capacity, we'd stop taking hourly parking so that we had enough space, but that basically gave us, given the rates that, of vacancy in the leased spaces, approximately a third, again, as many parking spaces as there are in the garage for revenue use. When we went to the non-automated system, then we had to do one-to-one for the leased spaces so that we could guarantee they'd be there. for the leased spaces so that we could guarantee they'd be there. So I I would, I'd like to go revisit that again also as I think there are things we could do with a person who operated the garage that would, that would probably produce enough additional revenue to make it work. As long as we can get, as long as we can get the demand, I think we can optimize the use of the, of the garages better than we have and and man them at the same time, which um produces the the image of safety.
I, I think there's a lot that can be done relative to lighting. Paint to lighten up the the walls. And if you had a guy collecting fees, you could also have security cameras he was monitoring and, you know, um and ways of deterring any uh strange people in the garage. So I think that'd go a long way to increasing the safety. And plus, then you would have to communicate to the general public that you've made these changes and the garages are much more user-friendly.
Absolutely.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. Um is BAE still utilizing a lot of our garage space? And and what's the long-term plan for that?
Um, Ms. Chairman, if I may?
Director Cummings?
We don't have a long-term plan yet from BAE, though we've been in active conversations with BAE over the last two months. Um, uh this has been a project that myself and Sarah Marchant, the Director of Community Development, have been working on because it's gonna take a multifaceted approach. Uh BAE, I think, would like to lease some more spaces from us. Um I'm speaking a little out of turn because they haven't said this definitively to us, but um they're gonna be looking to lease uh some, some additional spaces. They're gonna look to increase um parking on-site. They own a a map and parcel that they're currently not using, so they, they're gonna be looking to to um create a, a new parking lot. Uh but ultimately, they they have, I wanna say something in the order of a magnitude of a, of a hundred and fifty-ish, hundred and seventy-five permits from us for the uh Elm and High Street Garage. Um they're looking for, at least right now, to to maintain that, but shift them from the garages to to a parking lot. I I suspect that's what they'll be looking to, to talk to us about over the next couple of weeks. Uh in addition to that, um and I'm stealing a little bit of of um Community Development's thunder. I won't go into too much detail, but we're in active conversations about trying to, you know, make sure that they're using our, our, uh, our public bus system as well. And so they're, they're actively talking about figuring out ways so they can use the bus system. And that, that'll be a great, if we could, uh for the city and for BAE. Um BAE is making a, a lot of investments uh on Canal Street. Uh I believe they're bringing in just a hundred interns this summer alone for Canal Street. Um and they have something in the, in the order of a magnitude of about 1,700 employees at that site. So uh good problems to be had and and that's a great sign that um Nashua's economy from that industry is doing well. And uh part of the reason why I believe that the Renaissance Downtown Project has seen so many leases, uh if you were to to uh live in that apartment building, you'd be able to walk to work.
Thank you.
Having some familiarity with that particular vendor. They were interested about six years ago in building a parking garage across the street from that building where the main entrance is. Um they were looking for some kind of incentive from the city to help them do that. So that might be something for you to take a look at um and see what could be done to help them move in that direction if-
I, I would, I would love that, Mr. Chairman. We've been, that is not uh off the table and we would encourage that. Um I, my understanding is BAE has been slow to come around to that concept, but if we could encourage them to go more vertically than horizontally, that's only better for our downtown. Um uh you know, we have an employer of 1,700-plus employees. We wanna work cooperatively with them. That's a great economic engine. We obviously have goals ourselves in terms of the type of downtown we wanna have. Um a last thing I think we want is a sea of asphalt, but but there's trade-offs to be made. And if we could work with them cooperatively to develop a public-private partnership uh where maybe we even built the garage and they committed to long-term lease, that's something that's very um prominent these days. Um they would help us and it would be a win-win for everyone. So I I I will bring that to them and ask them again what their thoughts are.
They might be also more conducive into giving up some of the land along the river where you wanna do the Riverwalk.
Yeah.
But leave that in your capable hands.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I had a couple of other questions if no one else has any. First question, when do we anticipate having the new parking meters in?
New parking meters?
The ones that take credit cards?
Uh so we are in the early stages of talking about doing a trial, um a pilot, if you will, um on, I believe, Pearl Street um for this summer to see how that works. We have pay stations, um and we're seeing, we're gonna see a new pay station at the library lot this spring. But um once we do the pilot, then we will assess whether we should continue to move forward with changing out the heads to accept credit cards. But we have to be very careful that we only do it in areas where we actually make money because there will be uh an additional data processing fee that will have to be charged. Um and we gotta make sure that we collect enough revenue off of those individual meters to make it worth our while.
I can tell you, visiting Pearl Street three or four times a week, you can never find a place to park. So that would be a good test case.
That's why we pick through.
I have just one additional question. If we had to, if we changed the direction of Pearl Street, and by the way, all the people I've talked to that are the people that own businesses on Pearl Street are in favor of changing it. They're just asking, they keep asking, when's it going to happen? Would we have to then reposition the parking meters or just re-line the streets?
So this is the project that uh Alderman Lopez was referencing just a few moments ago. Um as much as we would be pleasing Pearl Street uh businesses, I I think we would be upsetting uh people on Temple Street because we'd be a huge shift uh relative to Temple and and Pearl. So I, I bring that before you, just so you know. As much as you're hearing the good, there's also the bad that needs to be uh understood and I think we could work through it. I again recommend that we continue that conversation. I think the circulation study is a good thing. We wouldn't necessarily need to change the meter heads. We wouldn't necessarily need to uh do much in terms of Pearl Street. Um we would need to reconfigure the intersection, for lack of a better word, of Elm and uh, I'm sorry, not Elm, um of Central and um Maple? Central, Maple and and Pearl. So as you enter, start to enter the round, we would have to straighten that out. That may include adding a signaled light there. That would be the biggest infrastructure improvement that would need to occur to get cars safely from Central onto Pearl.
In my humble opinion, you ought to do that now.
I'm sorry, Walnut. Thank you, Walnut. That's what I, so Walnut. So from, from uh Central, crossing Walnut onto Pearl.
So as I was saying, in my humble opinion, you ought to do that now because that intersection is dangerous.
Alderman McCarthy?
I thought we were looking at doing pay-by-phone, which would eliminate the need for swapping the meter heads out for credit card payment.
That, yes. So we are doing pay-by-cell. That goes live, I wanna say, early May. I mean, that is coming in, you know, inevitably, um uh imminently, I should say. Uh May, I believe, we go, we go live with a pay-by-cell. Uh but that does not preclude us from, in select areas, we could still roll out and there is a thought that we should try doing uh in high-volume areas uh for, for folks who are not technology-friendly, that credit card choice.
I, I guess I'd like to see first what the revenue picture from pay-by-phone is because if, you know, we get another 5% revenue by replacing the meter head, that's probably not the greatest investment.
Yeah, right.
One other question has to do with railroad. Two things. One, you might add a bullet that says that during vacation week, like this week, the bus service, the parking lot up there, if they could park on fence posts, they would. They're on the grass. They're everywhere, you know. Um that place is loaded.
Off of Exit Eight?
Exit Eight.
Yep.
And every vacation week, it's like that. If you had a train service, you might alleviate some of that congestion. But the question I have is if, if the state and everybody's Snickers.
Nothing starts well like that.
Yeah. If, if the state were to pursue a, a public railroad infrastructure project, how would that impact the agreement that we have with our current vendor that's going to put in service? And if the vendor that we are dealing with puts in the train service from Bedford to Lowell, if the state in some ungodly shift of position, you know, went with, wanted to go with the commuter rail service, how does that play together?
As, those are great questions and I, and I don't have um the answers um at the forefront of my mind. That's all evolving. It's all a very fluid uh um issue. Um the private sector company that we're working with will continue. They are working very aggressively uh right now to um bring passenger rail from Worcester to Providence. And they will continue to focus on that endeavor and they are, and they are working diligently on it. I think what they will do is they will not be as aggressive as trying to uh bring passenger rail from a private sector solution from Boston up to, up to Manchester Concord and and whatnot. So we would be um slowing down a little bit uh with that, with them. They would still wanna do it, but I think they would wait to see how things evolved in Concord. And part of that is because the, big part of their conversation centers around um what the MBTA is willing to do because the MBTA owns the legal rights. And the MBTA, I think, will wanna see what happens. And then um they'll assess and go from there.
Other questions? Alderman McCarthy?
I was just gonna point out that the MBTA is probably what decides which of those happens because they own the right to carry passengers in the New Hampshire corridor. So they can, and they would only lease those in all likelihood to one company or or to BSRC or to the state of New Hampshire.
I was trying to be a little bit more polite, but that's exactly right. It's gonna be the MBTA who owns the legal rights to it.
Okay, so are there any particular questions? The revenues are on page 34, appropriations on 93, 94, 96. Are there any questions relative to Director Cummings' limited budget? Seeing none? Thank you, Director Cummings.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion, Alderman O'Brien?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table the Budget R18019.
The motion is to table the Budget R18019 until the next budget meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh we have still on the table R18022, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,500,000 for the fiscal year 2018 sewer infrastructure program. This was also assigned to the Board of Public Works to appear on its 4/26/18 agenda. This was tabled during the public hearing and is scheduled for 4/30/18 at 7:00 PM in the automatic chamber. Al, also, Mr. Chairman, we have before us, still on the table, R18023, changing the purpose uh of up to $514,000 in unexpended bond process from various wastewater projects to fiscal year 2018 sewer infrastructure program. This was also assigned to the Board of Public Works and to appear on this 4/26/18 agenda. It was tabled at a public hearing on R18022, scheduled for 4/30/18 at 7:00 PM in the automatic chamber.
Both of those are tabled pending the public hearing, which isn't till the 30th, so uh we won't be taking those from the table till after the public hearing on the 30th. General discussion? Seeing none? No public comment? Remarks by Alderman? None. We have no need for a non-public. Well, Alderman Wiltshire? Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 8:05.